Workshop session to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. We invite everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to shut off your camera before you stand for the pledge, you can do so on the bottom left hand of your Zoom tray. And I believe Dan will have you display a flag. A pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note for anybody who's joining us remotely or watching streaming online. We are in a workshop session, so we, this is a workshop session of council. We will be more informal than we typically are in a full council meeting. This is tonight is for council education and consideration. It is a working session. We will not be taking any official action this evening. Tonight's session is only for discussion purposes. We do have an open forum on the agenda this evening. Karen, do we have any submissions or any participants for open forum?
I do not have any submissions and I don't have anybody as attendees waiting, so no.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we have a single item for consideration of council this evening, and that's the 10-year financial plan. Patrick, I will kick that off over to you to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Back when the strategic plan came about, one of the large issues was how do we maintain and get our infrastructure up to where it should be? The city was and still is quite behind on the paving of its streets and some of its facilities. So in order to take a long-term approach and a rational approach to this, it was suggested that we come up with a 10-year financial plan so we can see how we possibly could solve some of the problems. The reason a 10-year financial plan is important because it does lay out what the issues are and then gives you options, or at least one option, how to fund on those improvements. Now, what you'll see tonight is what we've come up with. So far, we've worked with Bruce Kimmel and Ellers to quantify what the infrastructure needs, how we're going to get them, how we're going to get there, and also operational needs. And not to spoil the surprises Bruce might give you, but it's obvious to me and to everyone else that the big nut to crack here is infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Our operation funds are doing well, general funds in good shape, water, sewer is good shape. The surface water may need a little bit help, but it really is the infrastructure. It's the streets, it's the roads, it's the curves, it's the Public Works building. This council has taken in the past the right steps to put the water system in a place where it needs to be, and we're successfully going down that road and making those improvements so that we have a reliable water system for the long term. And so now it's time to address and turn to the roads and other items and see where we can get to. I'm going to have Bruce go through some of this with you. I just have to remind the council, this is the first part of the plan. You may not like it, or you may like it. It may seem painful, but take into consideration what it is and let's talk through if this is a feasible way to do it, or we need to adjust back and forth on some of it. So without anything else, or if you have questions, I'm going to turn over to Bruce Kimmel of Ellers, and he has a short presentation to tell you what the 10-year plan is about.
Thanks for being here.
Great. Thanks for having me, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Bruce Kimmel of Ellers, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen here and move to a PowerPoint presentation. Can everyone see that? Great, okay. Well, it was really a pleasure to work with you on this project and this financial plan. The financial management plan, let me just give you a brief overview of this. What we've really tried to do with the financial management plan, or FMP, is to put together a multi-year fiscal plan that looks at both your tax-supported funds and, in your case, your utility funds as well. And what we've done is integrate your capital improvement plans, so really looking in depth at what you plan on doing across the organization in terms of significant capital projects and equipment purchases, I should add. But also not just identified the project, the year and the cost, but also identified whether you're going to pay cash for a certain project or capital equipment acquisition, or issue debt, and then repay that over a certain period of time. We've also, across your various funds, estimated your future operating revenues and expenses. We've done some estimations of future tax-based growth, although, as I'll point out later, we've tried to be pretty conservative on that front. And then we've also factored in your existing and to the extent we target future debt for certain projects, future potential debt of the city. So what we've really tried to do is not come up with a budget document per se. This is still really a fiscal planning document or projection, but we've tried to really capture everything that has a meaningful impact in terms of the push and pull of the city's finances going forward. And as I mentioned, this particular FMP did include your surface water management fund, your water fund, and your sewer fund. So by looking at all of these elements in concert, we're really trying to come up with a game plan or roadmap that is going to be financially viable for you. Of course, you're the deciders on what's viable from both a political and a policy perspective, but I hope you'll agree that this is a reasonable starting place from a financial perspective, given how strong you are currently, where you're starting from in this exercise. We think we've come up with a baseline projection that seems reasonable, but of course, we're looking for your feedback and for your suggestions on how to refine it and make it stronger going forward. What we really want is for this to be something that you update on an ongoing basis and that you do in parallel with the city's budget process. We don't want it to be a study that just sits on a shelf. We want it to be really meaningful. It's something that staff updates annually with or without our participation and then brings to you saying, okay, we got through the 2021 projects. Here's how that changes the model. Let's look at 2022 and going forward. So that's really our hope and our aspiration for this to be a living, breathing model going forward. Just a few points on how we came to put together the plan. We worked very closely with staff over the last couple of months, looking at historical financials and debt projections or service schedules. We looked at your future operating budget and capital project priorities. We then drafted a model to really put everything together, as I discussed previously. And we met with department heads from across your organization a couple of weeks ago to really go through the model in depth and solicit staff feedback on the assumptions we use, the funding approaches, the specific projects. And got a great deal of very helpful input from staff through that. So tonight, we're here to review the findings with you and again, get your questions and thoughts on this with which we can then refine the model and update the estimates for 2021 as a starting place. And then again, as I mentioned, hopefully, this will be an ongoing process for the city so you can really keep track of how you're doing in meeting your capital needs while, of course, keeping the rest of your budget in balance as well. Okay, let's take a look at the general fund. And I should note that the reason I'm doing this in a PowerPoint is because I didn't want to subject you. I'm just going to pull up a hand note, but there's about 20 pages that look like this or maybe a little bit more, and Patrick knows this by heart, but we thought maybe you didn't want, at least at this initial juncture, to see all 20, 25 pages of projections in 10-point font. But by all means, I'll be happy to share that with you in the future. So looking at the general fund, we did assume pretty conservative assumptions across the board for this 10-year projection. We held intergovernmental revenues and franchise fees flat. I'll discuss those more in the context of street improvements. We also assumed just 1% growth in non-property tax revenues. We, on the other hand, tried to be maybe a little bit conservative in the other direction in terms of inflating non-capital expenses at 3% and capital costs at 4%. So certainly wanting to add in a certain amount of inflation for the operating and capital side of the budget. After some discussions with city staff, we know that it's very possible, although this will be subject to future council discussions and decisions, that you'll be adding some new staff members over the next decade. So we assumed $100,000 increments in each of the next 10 years. So in 2022, I think we started $100,000 of new operating expenses there, and then in 2023, that would be 200,000, then 300,000. That's really just a placeholder, knowing that you would have a certain number of discussions to come before you made those decisions. Similarly, we know that there's been some call and interest for new recreation capital projects, such as trails and other open space initiatives. And so similarly, we added a placeholder, $50,000, then $100,000, 150, and so on, as placeholders in the projections for the general fund going forward. So with those assumptions, just to basically break even and hold your fund balances where they are currently for the general fund, you need an average of about a 5% levy increase over the next decade. And again, this is just a projection. All of these assumptions can be changed and the funding priorities can be adjusted as well. What's really neat, I should mention this about the model, is it's basically a very it's a very detailed and well-knit-together model, but it's basically a glorified Excel spreadsheet. So you can really run or have us run countless iterations to really test different assumptions and see what's going to make sense for you from a financial policy and a political perspective.
Bruce, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On the previous slide, you say 5% operating levy increase, this 5%, but that's a number independent of what's happening with the tax base. And so it's possible, depending on what's happening with tax base, that the tax rate could be something much lower than that if we've got an expense, or are you including tax base increase?
No, yeah, Mayor, that's a great question. When we look at operating levy at this point in the calculation or the cash flow, we are really just looking at the dollars that would need to be generated. So you're absolutely right, depending on what happens with your tax base to support that level of operating levy growth, you could be looking at something significantly less than a 5% increase. And certainly, we wouldn't expect anything more than that in terms of a tax rate increase because you will very likely continue to have at least some level of growth for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
Now, on property tax-based assumptions, I should note that here, I think we have been maybe overly conservative. And so one thing I'm looking forward to doing with city staff is testing some different assumptions. But especially with us being in this pandemic situation, we didn't want to have overly robust or rosy projections for residential growth and commercial industrial growth. That said, when we sat with your department heads a couple of weeks ago, I think it was pretty unanimous, based on the growth that you are having, that this baseline level that we've assumed of 1% growth in existing tax base, and then an additional 1% annual growth over the next decade from new development, it seemed pretty apparent to everyone that that is a very conservative estimate for the city of Forest Lake. So this is again where, you know, you might want to use a certain level of assumptions for planning purposes, but as you get closer to actual budgeting and making go or no-go decisions to look at different assumptions and see what the tax impacts would be based on those different tax-based assumptions. We didn't include, and I should note this specifically, in this baseline, we have not included new tax capacity from new commercial development. And we know that that is definitely a conservative assumption. On the flip side, however, you do have a number of TIFT districts that will be expiring and decertifying. And so we wanted to include the tax base that will be coming back for city general purposes as those TIFT districts finished. All right, so next, we wanted to talk about some of the capital projects. I'm not going to go through all of these numbers in detail, but I wanted to show just this snapshot because it is sort of a roll-up of all of the capital improvement projects. The Capital Improvement Fund, as you know, is the one that's basically associated with your general fund. You've got capital equipment replacement, and then the stormwater, the water and sewer funds. And this 10-year outlook basically rolls up all of the projects, most of which we're assuming will be cash-funded, and a few that we're assuming in this iteration of the model will be debt-funded, and I'll get into a little bit more detail in a moment. You can see, based on the best work of your Public Works Director, your engineer, and other city staff leadership, there is a lot, as Patrick mentioned, that the city has amassed in terms of potential future projects and needs. And so this seems like a very timely exercise to address, okay, how can we best take care of these capital needs over the next 10 years?
To these numbers, Bruce, we've added 50,000 increase every year for roads. Did we continue to build that to 50, 100, 150, 200 in these projections? I believe that was in the capital improvement line. I want to confirm that's still there.
I'm sorry, which line are you referring to?
It's the slide before.
Okay.
And I think it's, I think it's the Capital Improvements Fund. I think that's got, where we put that extra 50,000, if I'm correct, and then this year was 100, then it goes to 150. And about the time I quit driving, it hits a million.
Well, so I believe we actually have considerably more than that for road, you said road projects, is that right, councilmember?
Yes. Patrick might be able to explain it better.
Yeah, the next year, it goes to 100,000, and in the plan right now, it indicates 100,000 in 2022. If we did 50,000 every year, it's not going to meet some of the goals that we were talking about in this plan. So we've plugged in 100,000 for this year, 100,000 for '22, and then it jumps to 250, 400, a million, a million two. And it tops out at a million two in 2027. That's pretty aggressive, but in order to meet some of our needs for roads, that's where we've placed it, so.
Right, so I'm tracking with you now, councilmember. So what, and I'm glad you raised this because this is a really important point. So far, I've really been discussing more the assumptions on the spending side, and I'll discuss some of the other non-tax revenues that we're assuming as well. But then what we basically do, based on all of these inputs, is we figure out, the bottom line is the taxes that would be required, at least for the non-utility funds. And the numbers that Patrick just noted are the taxes that would be necessary, given all of the other assumptions regarding the road projects that are being forecast for the next 10 years. And so basically, to avoid cratering your capital improvement fund, fund balance, and to actually achieve these projects as they're forecasted to be necessary, those tax increases for the capital improvements fund are what would be necessary to do that and to keep the fund generally in balance.
Thank you.
So the spreadsheet would be where we would be able to find that detail?
Right, and actually, I'm going to be rolling up, well, I can go to the model at any point as well, but yes, it's in the spreadsheet. And then a later slide does discuss all of the tax impacts. And you'll be able to see that those capital improvement fund taxes as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's get a little more granular, looking at projects. So councilmember, one of the main reasons why our model is telling us you'd need more taxes in the capital improvements fund is really because of the level of street reconstruction projects that are deemed necessary in this iteration of the model. And again, you're the deciders on the policy level on what is actually feasible and what makes sense to commit to. But as you can see on this top line, your staff and engineers have identified about almost $3 million a year of total annual investments in road maintenance and reconstruction. And that's specified somewhat by specific projects, and then others as placeholders for projects to be determined. So we've got some granular detail in the model, and then there's some placeholders for the rest of what is deemed appropriate and necessary. The Public Works and Fire Station facility is a big driver. This 9.5 million that you can see is basically the general fund or the capital improvements fund portion of that. And then it's also estimated that another 9.5 million would come from the water and the sewer funds for a total of about $19 million in current dollars, although the project would be taking place in 2025. So we did include some inflation there, but in today's dollars, we're looking at about a $19 million total cost. And then you can see there's a number of state-aided street projects that have unfunded portions. I won't go into a whole lot of detail there, but those are some of the granular detailed projects that are already on deck. We've got a few large pieces of equipment, fire equipment, as well as public works equipment and police equipment. And then you can see moving more into the water and sewer funds, we've got a few different projects relating to those utility systems and the, again, as I mentioned, the 9.5 million that would be paid from your utility funds. Then you can see there's quite a few lift station and force main projects totaling an estimated $7.5 million in today's dollars, and then some equipment relating to the utility funds as well. So again, there's a lot more detail in the spreadsheet, but we wanted to give you a summary of, you know, the breadth and the scope of the projects that are being contemplated over the next 10 years.
Bruce, can you flip back to that previous, just quick headline? I understand Public Works County Transfer Station 2022, Public Works Fire Station Facility 2025, 9.5 million. Can someone just refresh my memory on what the detail is? I know we've had conversations about a second fire facility, is that?
Yeah, I'll take that. So when we started looking at this, we wanted to be, the Public Works facility obviously is the driver here because if anybody's looked at our Public Works structure and facility, it's it's not very good. So in order to make sure that we plan right, we know eventually, long-term somewhere, we're probably going to need another fire station. That's just probably a fact. And so instead of just not counting that or not including that, we thought that we should include it with the Public Works facility. It may be at the Public Works facility. We could build the shell and not fill it. It's just, we wanted to make sure that we covered all of those expenses so that we just don't, we don't come back to you in five years and say, oh, by the way, we need another a million, X million dollars for a fire station. So it includes both of those facilities, whether they're, whether just the Public Works will be built right away, whether they both will be built and one will just be kind of the shell and built later. It's just a planning, making sure that we cover that in the plan.
Thank you.
So one thing we wanted to note is that we really, to the extent possible, and as it seemed appropriate, given the cash flow dynamics of each of your funds, your general fund or your capital improvements fund, your water fund, your sewer fund, your stormwater fund, we wanted to see, to the extent possible, what was the ability to cash fund projects on a rolling basis instead of issuing debt. And really, in this iteration of the model, we only focused on issuing debt for the projects that you really wouldn't be feasible to save up money or it didn't make sense given the need for the projects. So you have about $2 million in franchise fees, as well as state and federal aid dollars that are available and that we're assuming will remain dedicated to funding your street infrastructure projects. And as I mentioned before, we've held those numbers static for the 10-year duration, so hopefully those numbers would increase and you would actually have more cash funding ability. But we assumed, you know, basically, $2 million a year available to paying a significant amount of the street projects. Then for the Public Works and Fire Station facility that you were just discussing, when you add some inflation to the $19 million estimate and basically look four years out to 2025, we're estimating about $21.6 million for that project cost. And again, we're estimating the debt service on those bonds to be issued would be paid 50% from the general fund, the capital improvements fund, 25% from water, and 25% from sewer. And then you have about $35 million. Again, these are inflated dollars for future years as appropriate for the underfunded portions of street projects. Looking at then the property tax levies. So we've tried to summarize here over the next 10 years what your property tax levies would be. We've got the general fund, excuse me, one second. My dog has decided he really wants to be part of this discussion. I really apologize for that, but you probably don't want to hear him scratching, so I'll be right back.
We're a pet-friendly community. My dogs have borrowed the Pledge of Allegiance.
Apparently, Juniper here really wants to be part of this discussion of your tax levy.
Fascinating stuff.
Apologize. Okay, let me go back to the current slide here. Okay, so you can see the projected levies. Let me go back here. You've got your 2020 budget here for the operating levy, current debt service, other special levies, current tax rate is about 40%. Then you can see with inflation on the operating side, as well as current and new debt, how that might increase over time. Again, these are really just projections to give you sort of a gut sense of, okay, what is the overall levy growth look like, given this set of assumptions, right? If you make different assumptions about the number and breadth of road projects or other things, then of course, that's going to change the levy impact. And then you can see, moving on, now, one thing I would note is that, especially as you look out into future years, this is really where our maybe overly conservative assumptions about tax-based growth need to be questioned or at least tested with different assumptions, right? I'm not going to tell you that, you know, it's likely that you're only going to have 2% property tax growth due to both inflation and existing property tax, as well as new development over the next 10 years. And so it's highly unlikely that your tax rates would be escalating into the, you know, high 50s or into the 60s range. But again, this is where you can test different sets of assumptions and see, okay, as we're getting, you know, more committed to these projects, let's look at what the impacts might be under different sets of inputs. And I'd be happy to go back to any of these points, but I did want to touch on the utility funds as well, since that's an important part of your capital improvement projects. So we made a similar set of assumptions about all of your three utility funds in terms of growth and expenditure increases for both operating and capital costs and placeholders for new staff positions that would be assigned to those utility funds and operations. And then based on all those inputs, and again, the water main projects or the force main projects, the portion of the Public Works facility that would be assigned to your utility funds, we are estimating and recommending some different rate increases. Now, I would say that some of these numbers look very, very high and are as percentages, but for instance, your surface water management rate is actually quite low in terms of nominal dollars currently. So a 10% increase, while it's a large percentage commitment, doesn't actually mean as much of a dollar increase as one might think in isolation. So I should just point that out. The water fund is, you know, we are recommending or suggesting that in this scenario of the fund, of the model, of the model that a fifteen percent increase could be appropriate for two thousand and twenty one. There also though, I think you could look at some different sets of assumptions or rates of increase and see what could make sense. But based on the inputs that we have here, we think that at least an initial shot followed by much smaller increases in future years could be appropriate. And then in the sewer fund, in your previous forecasts of rate increases, you are actually estimating much larger increases for the sewer fund and smaller rate increases for the water fund. We've decided to recommend that you act sooner to bring the water fund into balance and into self sufficiency, so it doesn't need to really rely on the support of the sewer fund. So that's why you're seeing larger increases in the water fund, but actually smaller increases in the sewer fund than what the council had already agreed to. So I believe that if you actually take these in aggregate, you're at almost the same place as the previously suggested rate increases. Not significantly higher, but you can see it's a significant different allocation between the water and the sewer funds. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, so the two thousand and twenty one, just, I don't need an exact number, but the fifteen percent for the water fund, how much off the mark is that from what we had talked about for the rate increase? And I appreciate that we're kind of looking at a blend between sewer and water, but I think whenever we're having this conversation, we always need to remember that we are talking about two different user groups. Because we have, you know, it's not the same population paying each of those.
Mayor, I don't have that number right in front of me. Does anyone on the city staff that's attending have that?
And I don't need it.
Yeah, we will, we will try to look it up during the discussion and get back to you here. Just we have to look at the rate, the rate sheet and the ordinance that we passed that set the rates for the future here.
I do remember we had a spike, but I don't remember that spike being that high for two thousand and twenty one, but I also appreciate the broader context.
Yeah, we'll take a look and see.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, you're right, it is, the previous rates were not as high for water. But again, in the interest of self sufficiency, that might be one way you could do it, but certainly, you know, overall, if you look at all your utility funds in aggregate, you're in really solid health. On those funds, it's just the water fund needs a little more help. And the sewer fund is actually in very strong shape. And so you, as the governing body, have a number of decisions to make on how to bring those into, you know, balance individually over time.
Thank you.
Mayor Bain, I'd just like to add to two projects that we're estimating are adding basically over a million dollars in capital improvements in two thousand and twenty two and twenty four based on decisions on progress on other projects moving forward after Lers even started this. So now, you know, that's why it shows some of that. So such as in two thousand and twenty two, we're just estimating to be prepared to if we had to pay for it, if there's no negotiation and cost share. But how do we get water over to the future public works sites where the Washington County is also looking at doing the county transfer station? So worst case scenario, if the city had a hundred percent fund that, that's now built in. And then in two thousand and twenty four, now that we know kind of more what Mindot's doing with Highway ninety seven, we got our existing very large water main on the south side of ninety seven there. But if we're obviously expanding all the ninety seven to the south, so that's going to have to get relocated outside of their roadway. And right there, that's estimating worst case scenario, five hundred and seventy thousand to do that. So it's taken in and in looking at everything and anything that we might be dealing with in the future.
Thank you.
And then finally, Mayor and Council, the last slide I had for you is the total impact analysis, and this really rolls up as it relates to an average property, what the impacts would be for all of the assumptions on both the operating side, the capital improvement side for both tax supported funds and utility supported funds. And then also given the assumptions we've made for tax base and user base. And you can see that for a three hundred thousand dollar property, when one with a assessed value of three hundred thousand dollars rather, right now, the total city taxes and utility rates might be close to two thousand dollars. And you can see how, given all of the other assumptions in this version of the model, that would increase by a hundred dollars next year. And then from that point forward. That said, I would, I would point out that through two thousand and twenty five, if you go back to the capital improvements page, you're looking at upwards of sixty, almost seventy million dollars of projects. Now granted, in two thousand and twenty five, that's the year of the twenty million dollar estimated public works and fire facility. So that's kind of an outlier there. But you can see that while there are meaningful increases in the estimated impacts, number one, that could be offset if you do continue to realize more growth in your property tax base. And number two, you really are making significant, significant investments in capital infrastructure in exchange for those additional revenues. So why don't I step there, see what other questions you have, and I really thank you for your time.
Yeah, just to answer the rate question, at least for the water, it is expected seven percent for next year and seven percent for the following year on the water.
Patrick, will you get a copy of the PowerPoint? I know things might, might change, you know? Just to absorb it a little bit more.
And I think also maybe curate the model a little bit more so you can, you can tie it to the PowerPoint and see some of the line item details. So let us work with city staff on that and getting back to you as well.
Great. First I'd like, just kind of a broad question. Can you go back to the slide that showed the levy, projected levy increases by year? Yes, so I was perhaps optimistic when we went into this that I would, I feel like we're, so we're, we've, we've got excess, we've got a backlog of projects, right? And we're trying to work ourselves out of that backlog. I was going into this perhaps overly optimistic that in ten years, we would see some recovery of that and we kind of get to this leveling off. But if you advance to the next slide, I just see a continued escalation and how far do we have to go out to find this kind of equilibrium where we are out of the budget woods, if you will, or do you have some? Or is that just not realistic, given the nature of this exercise? I was hoping by year seven or eight, we could see some leveling off, and I'm not.
Sure. Certainly, I think as your community continues to grow, the perception of the levy required to serve that population, both in providing services and building and maintaining infrastructure, that could change, right? As, as your population continues to grow and as your tax base continues to grow. But I would also say that what's really driving this, Mayor, is the, is the the, the level of investment in in road infrastructure funded by taxes. And so if you are able to get more over time from non-tax sources, including state and federal aid and or franchise fees, and or if you decide to go in a different direction in some of the road funding priorities, that would have a significant increase, impact, excuse me, on these tax levy increases. We know that as the city continues to grow, there will be some need for continued growth in your general fund, operating levy, the top row of this projection. But some of the other rows below that are really going to be dependent on assumptions you make about capital investment. So I understand your concern. I would, I would just say, you know, this is also really a creature of all the different assumptions we've made. And wanting to get, again, an initial read from you as to what are your areas of question, concern? And this has really been a helpful conversation in that regard so far.
Yeah, and it's really the debt driving those increases. You, unless you have a, you know, find a bunch of cash somewhere, your debt in order to do these projects is where it's going. So that all of a sudden, you've got your debt service rising and you've, you've got, you know, those on fifteen year schedules, I assume that you won't see that leveling, you may not see that leveling up for quite a while because the, the backlog of projects is so great that, you know, we can try to stretch it out, but it's still, the only way we can see right now to, to come make a dent in any of this is, is to issue debt.
Ryan, um, so one of, one of the slides had some detail around specific street projects. Ryan, we have conversations all the time where somebody will, you know, have a a concern over a particular street. Iverson Avenue just came up today as a matter of fact. You know, and recognize that there's some work to be done and someone wants, you know, I, I reach out routinely and say, hey, when is this scheduled for? And inevitably, it's, you know, that's, you know, eight years out, ten years out, even further. Are we catch, is there a mechanism in here where we are catching up on that pace? And where can we see the calibration or how you are kind of escalating that or speeding up that maintenance model? Because I think that's potentially one of the dials to play with here, right, is are we comfortable with that current pace or do we want to see some escalation?
Mayor City Council, so the, the specific road projects you saw identified, those would be streets that are state aid eligible. So along with some of the, the bond money or franchise fees, we're able to use state aid money on those streets as well. If I, I've never shared my screen before. If I, somebody should tell me how to do that, I could pull up a figure here.
You should, do you have a green share screen at the bottom of your Zoom chat?
Yeah.
Go for it.
So.
Just make sure you want us to see what's on your screen.
So you can see this map now?
Yeah, we see it. Yeah.
That's all the roads rated three through six minus the roads we already have programmed that we did this year, twenty one and twenty two. That's what the dollars would touch. So if you got through all that almost in ten, in the ten year timeframe, that's, you know, everything's been laid out and and let's just say the other roads didn't degrade, you would only be left seven through ten then. So that map right there, I think, speaks volumes on how far you get in ten years. And what you touch and you can see what's left is stuff that we've been doing last several years, so.
Are the orange, are the orange roads in worse shape or is it the green roads?
The orange are the three to fours and the yellows are rated five to, five to sixes.
And so that's what, that's what's covered in the ten years.
Yes.
And either, either through our local funding or through some level of state aid. So I see you've got North Shore.
Yep.
Wow, okay. Twelfth Avenue, that was one of the state aid, okay.
How do I go back?
I should be able to hit stop share.
I've hit the cow, right.
There you go.
Learned something today.
Are there any other questions for me? I know that we threw a lot at you, but I guess I just wanted to end with saying that you, you're in really strong financial shape and that's the product of a lot of hard work and decisions that you and previous staff and councils made. And you know, this is also reflected in your very strong bond credit rating. And so what we really look forward to doing is, is to keep working with staff, keep getting input from you. And as you move along with making decisions about capital projects, continuing to update this model, putting in your actual rates of growth and the decisions that you make in each year's budget, and then continue to refine and make this model better. I hope that this will be something that gives you confidence that your team is really looking at all of the major drivers that impact your city tax rates and your utility rates and that there's not something just hanging out there in left field that's going to slam down on the city and really upset everything. We're not seeing any black swans out there. I think you're in really good position to be having these discussions about how to tackle some major capital investment in streets and other things.
So Bruce, I know bond, bond rates are, are very good right now. Do you have a crystal ball?
Well, I do, actually. Yeah, Councilmember Beistrum, I'm of a mind that I don't see rates increasing anytime soon. And that's really good for cities like Forest Lake, but it's not a really great sign of confidence in the future or the economy, right?
Right.
There's, there's still so many investors that are chasing uni bonds and for their safety and liquidity and, and lack of risk. And, and there's just more demand than there is supply, which is really keeping a damper on rates, even as the stock market does well and you know, as the economy does relatively well, even considering the pandemic. I don't see that dynamic changing anytime soon. We're still at, at near historic low interest rates. And every time rates seem to come up, something will happen to cause them to go back down again. And so certainly you would think at some point rates will have to go up, but I don't see that right around the corner by any means.
So Bruce, and just to make sure I understand, so do you pretty much present it a worst case scenario?
It's close to a worst case scenario, yes. In terms of being very conservative on tax base and also inflating operating costs and capital costs the way we have, I think you're right, Councilmember. We've tried to, worst case would be actually showing negative growth for the city, right? But that's not realistic. And so, yes, I think we're, we're taking a fairly or a definitely conservative approach to this projection.
And is that, is that true on the tax side too? You, most, the majority of the assumption is that this is all funded by, by taxes. So there is enough, there are potential opportunities there for additional sources of funding to offset some of those.
That's right.
Okay. What, um, I guess I'd just broadly ask, um, what areas do we feel that, are there any areas where you think about alignment between this ten year plan and alignment with our strategic plan? Are there areas where we feel like there's under representation or areas where we continue to potentially not hit the mark? I guess something that comes to mind, I think I heard parks, infrastructure is a year. I'm not sure that that fills out our robust, you know, trail plan and some other things that we've talked about and are part of the comp plan. And maybe we're saying that that is, you know, we don't fully close that gap in ten years. Is that an area that is still perhaps some, there's still some, you know, open need or a gap between what we say and the strategic plan and what's reflected here?
Yeah, when we started this ten year plan, we were fully aware that parks and trails needed to be addressed. We, we haven't included, included much of that in this plan at this point. We, we wanted the parks and trails to do their, their, their work and try to determine what those amounts were going to be or what their vision and all that. That still needs to be included in a plan like this, so parks and trails are, are a little bit like a stepchild, kind of off on the side right now, waiting to get in the door. And that'll only make these pictures a little bit worse. Again, trying to find alternative sources of revenue may be difficult. I know there's very few options we have as far as doing that. I mean, we can always look at special assessments for roads. We can look at a special sales tax for projects, but those are both very big and can be sometimes controversial things, but those are the only two other sources of revenue besides growth that we can think of at this point, unless Bruce has another one out of his magic.
Mayor Bain, though, I would comment on trail expansion, you know, even with the next five year window. How we're working with Mindot and Washington County and, yeah, it's taking water and sewer funds and our state aid funds. We are going to have an extension or a huge expansion of trail network with the Highway ninety seven project, the two county projects. And it's all going to be looped and connected to something. So for us to say that we're not moving forward on trails, we're going to have more trails built in the next five years than we have five years ago. So, you know, it's just not a city led project. You can see what we did at Goodview and how we've made. Uh, you can see what we did at Goodview and how we've made a bunch more connections there. And then how we teamed that up with previous grants on Safe Routes to School, where we came down 61, where we came down 8. And then we did a state aid project, uh, a couple of years ago where we, you know, came across 15th and connected to a, another area. So even though they were not leading the city, the projects in the next five years with the county and Mindots, there is going to be a significant amount of trail expansion with just those three projects.
And, and that works just right to, right to the strategic plan and that works right to the goal. And if that's happening in partnership with other projects, that's fantastic. Um, I know Parks, Sites and Trails has a meeting tomorrow and I know the discussion of that 10 year plan is on, that is an agenda item. I, but I also know that, you know, investment in recreation and investment in those park areas is, is in spot we've been historically under invested in, and if we're, we're going to make it different, we need to take the pain and pull it into the plan. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing that now rather than, you know, three years from now recognizing that we still haven't fully hit the mark. Again, not to say that everything is going to be funded, but I think when we're having the conversations back with the community on, why did you do this and not this? You want, I, I would like to have that full menu in front of us and to, so we can say, here's the priorities given, available sources of revenue. And I think we have to have some conversation around what is our appetite of, you know, general fund support of some of that park programming? And this is part of what, you know, getting all of that in there is part of what helps facilitate that conversation.
Can I just get some clarity?
Oh, I apologize if I could just jump in. I, I'm being paged to attend another call. I, I apologize. I, I, I'm covering for a colleague that wasn't able to attend a meeting and, and they're asking for my presence on another call. I'm really sorry. Are there any questions, other questions for me right now? Or do I have your permission to sign off and then get on this other call?
Any quick questions? Yeah, and this is, this is just the first and multiple. This is the first and multiple conversation, so we will pick this up next time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Councilmember Gerard, go ahead.
Patrick, when he, when he had mentioned about the park board earlier or the park funds earlier, they mentioned 50,000 and 100, 150. Were we looking at a cumulative addition every year or just 50,000 a year? So is it 50,000 in 2020, 50,000, 100,000 in 21, 150 in 2022?
Yeah, when, um, yeah, when, when you see the budget at our next session, we, we're going to make a recommendation to amend the, the tax levy to be, begin to fund park programming, park rehabs. And that tax levy will be at 50,000. We would like to do the same thing we're trying to do with the streets. 50,000, 100,000 the next year, 150,000 the year after. We know, uh, both, you know, as we all know, that's not going to pave our streets very quickly or fix our parks and trails very quickly, but we have to start sometime or another. We're trying to at least start. And while we may be getting trails with other projects or, or parking, parkland with development, we, you know, just like streets we have, we don't have the funds, the funds have never been dedicated whatsoever. You can't fund a park system and programs with, uh, impact fees. Especially in slow, slow time. So in the long-term future, we have to look at a sustainable source. And while this is all very, it's a big nut and pain, might be a little painful, but we, we have to start and that's what this is about.
I can chime in quick too on the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission and our park plan. So we do have a meeting tomorrow. We are going to talk about the 10 year plan and I, I suspect that's going to be something as a regular agenda item for the foreseeable future. We are going to start a series of bi-weekly or meeting at least twice a week to start really diving into the vision that has been identified for Parks, Trails and Lakes. So breaking down a park, um, replacement plan for our current facilities, um, planning for future parks. Ryan's the expert on all of the trail developments in the community through, um, his work with, like he mentioned, state funding and all of those projects. So we're going to schedule some time with him in January to really just look into a map and say, okay, what, what do we know now? I know there's a couple coming up. So we are going to be working on that, two meetings a month, um, here in kind of this quote unquote off-season. So our goal is to have, you know, over the next few months, gather all of those details, put some costs to the projects. And align it with the budget conversations for 2022 considerations to see what potential budget impacts, um, we might need to look at. And then hopefully get that inserted into this 10 year financial plan. So I think we just need a few more months to work through that. Um, and I know this is the first version of, um, probably many alterations of that. So I just wanted to note that we are working on that and should have that coming forward in the coming months.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. And I also think that just having that detail in front of us helps to inform. I know we've got a, you know, question on the agenda for this week around, you know, park dedication fees and, you know, just having something to bounce that off of is, the more robust the plan, the better. So thank you for Parks, Sites and Trails for all of that work. And that's, um, I want them to feel like they've got a home on this plan, just like everybody else. And, um, I feel like we've started, but I'm not sure we're fully there yet.
And Jamie, are you guys discussing a plot at your next meeting?
Uh, we are tomorrow, yes. And there's a potential trail easement with that.
You know, at a minimum there, we're looking at extending the trail on the north side of Headwaters Parkway with that development too. So, you know, there's other, you know, private investment on its way potentially too.
That's great. You know, in fact, we need like a little, um, and Ryan, you probably have this, of some sort of a, kind of a count of, you know, miles of trail extensions, like, and I think there is some thought that we aren't extending trails because people don't see the, you know, major investment like Cardwood Creek. But to your point, it's all about these small segments of connectivity that over time do add up. And, um, us kind of accumulating that and communicating that out, I think would be a valuable tool.
We do have a base map that separates all the bituminous trails, all the concrete sidewalks, and then even the paper walkways, uh, where we got that down by the lake, so.
Right. I have pulled us down this rabbit hole. Um, and I know we wanted to have a higher, you know, and a, and a higher, more global perspective of 10 year plan. And so I kind of go back to the original question on, as we think about this and the, the detail, are there other areas that we are not as granular as we would like?
No, I, I do think the parks and trails were the next one, but I think we've covered the streets. I think we've covered, uh, public buildings. I don't see a, we haven't talked about additional public buildings for parks and recreation, obviously. That's a whole different discussion, whether we start to think about that or, or share services with schools. Yeah, I don't know if there's other things there. I mean, we've covered equip, capital equipment, we've tried to do that. We've tried to cover the roads, we've tried to cover any kind of infrastructure. I mean, you have, I think we have what we need. I can't think of anything else unless the rest of the staff can think of anything else that we're not addressing. And we also then tried to, in this plan, we've been focusing a lot on, on infrastructure and buildings and roads. And, but we've also then looked at, uh, staffing levels and what's that going to take as we get bigger? Part of that, part of this look at staffing levels is to fill in the gaps that we have now. But also anticipate the gaps that we will have as, as the city gets bigger and bigger. And there will be needs for additional police officers or whoever. We haven't identified those, we don't know when and if they're get filled or what to schedule that, but we have to, we've tried to account for that as well. Not to, you know, artificially inflate staff, but to be realistic and know that that's got to change.
Makes sense. Councilmembers, other questions? There is a feedback. I do think having the PowerPoint, Bruce's PowerPoint would be something we would all appreciate. And I'm not sure, I personally need all 26 pages of the spreadsheet, but some level of detail that where it's appropriate.
We, we will, we will, we'll send both of those. I think the, actually, of course, I'm a, I like to look at those kinds of spreadsheets, but we'll send them anyways. Uh, and if you have questions, we can try to decode them for you. I think what we have to talk about before we exit this group is, um, what's the next step? What do you want us to do? Where do we want to go? Really, the 10 year plan starts in 2021. And so do we commit to start taking that first step as far as bonding or whatever the case may be. And at least to begin a step instead of, you know, holding off on it and, you know, studying it. And all of a sudden it's 2022 and then 2023. So I think I'd be more interested in what you want to see as the next step. And, uh, I think you need time to look at the, the slides and the spreadsheets to kind of digest that. But sooner or later, we gotta get back to this. And what I anticipate this is going to be probably a workshop item a few more times at least, uh, going in through 2021.
So just in the near term, because we are rolling into a limit, also we're rolling, here we are in November and we have limited number of meetings before the end of the year. And, uh, that meeting is at December 14th is when we will be doing the 2021 budget. Perhaps for our next council meeting, if it's possible as a discussion item. I'd find it helpful to do some sort of a reconciliation between what, what, what is anticipated in the budget for 2021 and any gaps between that and the 2021 as we saw tonight. So our, is 2021 in the 10 year plan, is that as budgeted and we're already starting the plan? Or are there some gaps that we should consider? I would find that helpful and if we could do that prior to December's meeting, because again, we're kind of locked at that point.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my request as well. And, and I think, um, and this may be, and of course I don't have the spreadsheet up in front of me anymore. Well, none of us do, but, um, is there, is there a cadence of projects you are, you are, and maybe that is the level of detail that's included in the spreadsheets? I don't know, kind of a cadence of projects over the course of the next 10 years. As we're looking at those numbers, what, you know, what are, what are you looking at from a planning side?
Yeah, and, and I think that, um, we can answer that. I know the 10 year plan calls for borrowing in 2021. That will be where your first gap is, is, okay, we have not, we have not looked at that for the 2021 budget. However, if you borrow money in 2021 for projects, usually you've got delay in the debt service payment. So you're talking 2022 impact. So, but we'll try to see if there's those kind, that, that kind of a gap and let you know.
Yeah, I think the full picture is important. You know?
Agree. And then also, um, just communication on, as we're feeling that this is in a, not a, it's never in a final state, but it's in a working state. Some communication, I would love to see, um, you know, some Dan-type graphics that he did when we did the bond issuance. Where he kind of summarized, here's, um, you know, the fun, you know, projects to be considered and some things to kind of be a communication document. As far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, this community's never had a 10 year financial plan. And to, and to have this amount of detail and to have this amount of transparency on future projects and needs and where priorities and tax dollars are being placed. This is a great communication tool. And so some things to help digest, the community does not want to go through 22, two pages of spreadsheets, but they do care about the details. And it's a good opportunity for us to start talking about some of those future projects that are needed and the backlog and priorities. And so however, we can summarize that and turn it into a working document that we can get out there, I think would be helpful. Now, we all need time to get comfortable with that, but, um, I don't want to be too deep into the plan before we start talking about the plan.
Yeah, I think we have to do that pretty much up, up the bat maybe, you know.
And, and I. I, I, I just agree with that wholeheartedly. I mean, to be able to communicate out high level, this is our 10 year plan. This is what's happening in 21, 22, 23, so on and so forth, you know? And it, we don't have to get deep into the weeds with that. But, um, you know, I think, uh, that would really be of value from, from a council member perspective as I, I'm having conversations out in the community.
Yeah, and I think we can do that, uh, but I, I really do think that, um, the council has to be comfortable with the, the projects, but also how they're slotted. And I'm not sure you're ready to slot those yet. Um, and so before we have a communication that says, here's what we're doing, you know, 2025 comes along and we're asking you for $20 million. And, and again, that's only an estimate. And maybe before we get to that point, we actually have somebody come in and really do a, you know, a good estimate on what it might cost to build something like that. Because it may be, you know, 15 million, I don't know. But before we get, you know, too far along, the council needs to start to say, we're comfortable with this. Can we, you know, do you want to spread it out? What, how do we want to pay for it? We have to get through all of those things before we really know where we're going to go.
I think we should, I think we also need to consider the fact that this COVID thing isn't over yet. What's that going to happen to the economy in the next year? There's a lot of unknowns and, so, you know, we, we can have our wish list, but we gotta, I think we have to be prepared to be pretty flexible on this stuff too. So at least for another year. So my two cents worth.
I think that's wise. So workshop discussion item on any reconciliation of gaps between budget as passed in the preliminary levy and then as presented in the plan. Um, and then perhaps just a broader, you know, that'll be, we'll have a week to digest the information. And maybe we can get into a little bit more on sequencing of projects and some more detail. I suspect we're going to see some of those large spikes and, you know, we had a minimal conversation on that tonight. I think once we've all digested it, we'll have some more questions there.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that, um, I, I opened it up to department heads and is that sufficient detail feedback for at this point? I know this has been a ton of work, so thank you for going through the exercise. And it's not easy to think about how many, you know, heads are you going to need to plow streets in eight years? It's challenging exercise, so thank you. All right, council, anything further? Patrick, anything further you need from us this evening?
No, I'll, we will start working on this, uh, as soon as we can and get more information. We'll get to the spreadsheets and the, uh, the slides hopefully sometime tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. Um, anything else to come before us this evening? Not seeing any. I did see Karen, thank you for sending out the information on the training for the, Board of Appeals for Property Taxes, um, and for property valuation. Um, I will tell you, I have gone through that training. It is online, it's fairly straightforward, it's actually really well done. Even if you're not interested in going all the way through the certification, the training alone has just helped me so much in the questions that come up as people are looking at their valuation statements or they're looking at their tax statements. So I would just encourage you to, um, go through that. Again, yes, we technically should have somebody else certified, but just the information has just been helpful to understand just property valuation, those, how, how are those valuations determined? And how does that impact our resources of revenue? So I'll plug that time and time again. All right, not seeing anything else coming before us this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Gerard and a second from Councilmember Beistrum. And Karen, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bayne?
Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.